The February 10th, 2025, Tuolton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. Our first item of business is to pledge allegiance tonight led by Counselor Gonzalez.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to announcements. And our first announcement tonight, a very exciting one, is the Employee of the Year presentation and proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Bubinick and city councilors. With me is our Employee of the Year for 2024, Richard, and, Richard Contreras. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the Employee of the Year program, and then you have a proclamation to read. So our Employee of the Year program has been going on for a number of years, like 25 years, and we made some changes this year, just looked at it and made some tweaks to it. But at heart, it recognizes a City of Tuolton employee for demonstrating the city manager values in an exemplary way. And we ratcheted up the process this year, and the nominations had to provide ample detail, which meant between 75 and 500 words. And we got amazing nominations. We got a number of nominations, but Richard got five from throughout the organization. They're nominated by coworkers, and it's intended to recognize frontline non-management employees. We have a committee, so we have an engagement committee called the EIC, the Employee Engagement Crew. And so this committee, made up of the EIC members, the past two Employees of the Year, and two supervisors, individually scored the nominations, and then sent me their scores and compiled them. So not even they knew who was going to be the Employee of the Year until it was announced at our all-employee meeting two weeks ago. The eligibility, you must work at least 32 hours a week, have worked here the full calendar year for which you're nominated, and then must be in good standing, so you can't be in a disciplinary status, which, you know, makes sense. So now we know that Richard's not in a disciplinary status. The things that go along with the Employee of the Year, you get eight hours paid leave, $350, and we've always presented like this big check, but this year I convinced the Finance Department to allow me to give cash. And so we had like $350 in cash, which was kind of exciting for me, and I held on to it for a while and didn't want to give it away, but finally gave it to Richard. There's a press release, and then the proclamation. We have a Wall of Fame in city offices, and so the picture and a plaque goes on that. And then we have a roving trophy that gets presented, and Richard will keep that for the year. So like I said, Richard is our Contracts and Procurement Analyst in the Legal Department. And there were a number of quotes, just really substantial quotes, that came out of the nominations, and some of those are in the proclamation, but I didn't want to duplicate, so put a couple up here. "Richard is incredibly timely, responsive, helpful, and a true master of his craft. His approachability, can-do attitude, and happy-to-help you demeanor is noticed and appreciated. He is respectful of others' time and needs and is always extremely collaborative. Richard has cut through extra layers of bureaucracy while providing excellent service to all throughout the city. I can say with certainty that Richard's knowledge and expertise with contract and procurement regulations is top-tier. He's the best I've ever worked with." And I think those are just representative of our feelings about Richard. We're so lucky, we do not deserve him, and he is a wonderful Employee of the Year. So congratulations to Richard, and thank you for letting me present him.
Do you want to say anything, Richard?
I'll say a few brief words. Thank you very much, Sherilyn, for that, I appreciate it. It's an honor to have been selected, and I'm very appreciative of my coworkers. You know, there's a lot of teamwork involved in my position. I think this is a city where project managers and staff that I work with, they take public contracting very seriously, and I'm very grateful for that. And I think that comes from the culture of the executive team, you know, implementing the policies set by council. And, you know, I think a lot of us are very motivated by how great a city this is. You know, I go out into the city a lot, I frequent businesses here, and it's, you know, I see a lot of hardworking people working to make this a great city. And it motivates staff, I think I speak for a lot of staff, to try to provide the best services we can, and I'm happy to play a small part in that. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I look back to the presentations you gave on streamlining the procurement process for the city, and you're very professional in your presentation, you took care of all the questions, and again, as the one comment said, you're making us a lot more efficient, and pretty much appreciate your time in doing that, and congratulations for me.
Well, thank you so much.
And with that, proclamation from Tuolton City Council President Pratt.
Okay, well, whereas the Employee of the Year program annually recognizes a City of Tuolton employee for demonstrating the city manager's seven principles in an exemplary way, and whereas Richard Contreras was hired on August 1st, 2022, as the city's first ever procurement and contracts analyst, and whereas Richard has done something incredible in his short time at the city, he has turned contract management, once a maze of paperwork and headaches, into a smooth, accessible, and even exciting process. That's something. With his hard work and creativity, Richard has transformed how we handle contracts, and whereas the world of contracts is notoriously time-consuming and complex, Richard has made it straightforward and efficient. What used to be a drawn-out, confusing, and complicated process for the organization is now a simple turnkey solution. Thanks to Richard, unnecessary bureaucracy has been cut, which saves time for everyone, time, money, and stress. Richard has genuinely reimagined how we approach contract management, and whereas Richard brings an unbeatable combination of warmth and knowledge to every interaction, he's always ready to help with a smile and a can-do attitude that makes each contract conversation pleasant and productive. Working with him is a positive experience, and you can feel his genuine commitment to making a contract management as user-friendly as possible. And whereas Richard is not just an employee, he's the City of Tuolton's very own contract whisperer, and whereas Richard consistently demonstrates Tuolton core values of teamwork, respect, having a one-city mindset, empowerment, problem-solving, customer service, and being non-bureaucratic in a multitude of ways every day, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that Richard Contreras is named the 2024 Tuolton Employee of the Year, introduced and adopted this 10th day of February 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Should we get a picture? Yes. Megan will take it.
Want a friend?
Yeah. Thank you. You want to sell a one, too?
All right.
Here we go. You going to? This way, I'm sorry, guys, this way. This way, we're trying to avoid the table. There we go.
Now, for number two, new employee addition, Tom. Introduce, announce number two, a new city employee. Welcome, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinick and Tuolton City Council members. My name is Tom Steiger, and I'm the Parks Maintenance Manager for the City of Tuolton. It's my pleasure to introduce you to the newest member of the Parks Maintenance and Public Works Team, Richard Ormsby. Richard, better known as Ricky in these parts. He's worked with us through all of 2024 as a seasonal labor for five months with the Parks Maintenance Staff, and then additional four months with the Streets Crew. Ricky caught on quickly in both divisions and served us well. Prior to working with the City of Tuolton, Ricky performed carpentry work with his father in the construction industry, and also did some commercial truck driving. Currently Ricky is working with the Water Division, performing hydrant flushing, meter leak repairs, and reservoir site inspections. He'll be working with us in the Parks Maintenance Crew in the springtime and in the fall through the busiest pushes of our season. He'll be with us approximately March, April, and May, and then September, October, November for fall leaf cleanup. I know you'll join me in welcoming Ricky Ormsby to Tuolton. Thank you.
Welcome, Ricky.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
I'm just really happy to be here, and I've already learned a lot through the city, a lot of good people teaching me a lot, and I have a lot more to learn, and I want to.
All right. Why don't I welcome him to the city staff, and we've been doing part-time, and congratulations on a full-time gig. And it's kind of cool that you get to do, put your toe on both sides of the pool, if you will, that you can switch gears and keep things exciting, but hopefully you're going to be here a long time. Tom's a great guy to work for, and I appreciate you joining the team.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
You'll see him out there.
All right. Thanks for coming tonight. Our third announcement tonight is the Welcome Home Community Conversation Event Announcement. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here tonight to invite you and anyone else out there in the audience in Zoom land and watching this on television to an event that is hosted by Welcome Home. It's going to be a community conversation for housing, held at the Library Community Room this Thursday, the 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I just wanted to give a quick overview of who Welcome Home is. So they are a housing advocacy group located here in the metro region. They represent 60 nonprofits in the tri-county area. I'm sure you recognize a lot of these logos. So they use policy advocacy, and what we'll be doing on Thursday night is community education to get folks energized about housing, and particularly affordable housing, and how to have more of that happen. One of the, I guess, starting first with the, what is affordable housing? So I think you all are familiar with these definitions, but just for those people that are not, we're talking about people who are able, or affordable housing is where you're spending nowhere than 30% of your income on housing, and then affordable housing uses government subsidies, and then the median family income is a criteria for eligibility. So typically, lower-income housing is 60% of median family income, and then very low-income housing is usually 30% or lower. And so what Welcome Home does, as a big part of their advocacy, is supporting housing bonds, and so you may remember the name of the group, in support of the Metro Housing Bond, which resulted in creation of a lot of housing units in the duration of that bond so far. So here is just, again, an overview of the flyer. Again, it is Thursday, February 13th, day before Valentine's Day, fun little something to do beforehand, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Library Community Room. There are light refreshments served, so if you're interested in attending, please RSVP. And if you're interested in connecting with the Welcome Home organization or following them on social media, this is how you can do it. And that concludes my announcement, thank you.
All right. Not to be a jinx, but if this winter storm comes, we will let people know it's going to be, if it happens to be canceled or something, and reschedule it?
Yes, we absolutely will reschedule it, thank you for that, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. Actually, no, it's public comment, isn't it?
Public comment.
Public comment, yeah. That brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or in Zoom to address the city council on something that's not on our agenda tonight. Please keep it to about three minutes. I'll first take those folks in the room, and if there's none, we'll go to Zoom. So do we have anyone in the room who would like to address the city council tonight? Don't see any, how about in Zoom? All right, we're done with that section, okay, moving on. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are those items that are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like it pulled and heard later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of two items, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 27th, 2025, and item number two, consideration of resolution number 5876-25, authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with Portland General Electric, PGE, accepting up to $250,000 Renewable Development Fund, RDF Award. Would any, would any city councilor like either the one or more of these items removed tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second it.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to special reports. Our first special report is a recipient of one of our outside agency grants, and that's Smart Reading. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having us. I'm Sharon Benson, I'm the Senior Development Officer for Smart Reading, and this is my colleague.
I'm Becky Bard, I'm the Site Coordinator at Tuolton Elementary School.
And by colleague, I mean a full-time unpaid volunteer.
All right.
Tonight, we want to come and say thank you very much for the grant that you made to Smart Reading. I want to tell you a little bit about Smart Reading, and then tell you explicitly how we use the funds that you granted for us. Thank you for your vote of confidence in our work. Is anybody here familiar at all with the Smart Reading program? Great. Any former readers? No, but familiar with the program, thank you. I did bring a few books. I didn't bring enough, so if you wanted to pass one down to Mr. Gonzalez, yes, these are some of the books from our collection. I wanted you to see what some of the kids are reading these days. So Smart is Oregon's largest volunteer children's literacy nonprofit. Our vision is in Oregon where all kids can realize their full potential through reading. The kids that we work with are from underserved communities, mostly in Title I schools, and also Head Start preschools. 95% funded with donations, not for lack of trying. We have tried for federal funds, and we have had federal funds in the past. We were not approved this year, which we think is probably a good thing, since some of those funds are being rescinded. So we are driven by donations by individuals, corporations, and foundations, and organizations as well, and we were founded in 1991. So why Smart Reading? Before I mention what's on this slide, you have probably read through the Oregon Department of Education that as few as 40% of the kids in Oregon are reading at third-grade reading benchmark. That is to say, by the time they're in third grade, they're not reading at third-grade level. So it's a challenge here in Oregon, and it's not exclusively Oregon, it's across the nation. So research shows that one of the ways to help kids learn to read is to have shared reading time with them and make sure they have access to books. So that's what Smart Reading does. We don't teach kids how to read, we leave that to the professionals, the teachers who are doing a great job, by the way. We complement those efforts by bringing volunteers into the schools and reading with kids, either one-on-one or in a classroom setting, and we make sure that the kids have new books to take home and build personal collections, so up to 14 books. I mentioned that I guess it is 39% of kids are not reading at benchmark by third grade, but the kids that go through Smart, 64% of them are on track. So we know that the program is working, and we know that because we asked the teachers to compare how the students were doing at the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We also hear from the teachers that attendance is better on Smart Reading days. The kids bond and bond with their readers, they build relationships with them, and they want to come to school when they know they are going to be reading with their smart reader. And it's economical, it's only about $320 per student. The inverted pyramid here shows a little bit about how we're structured. We have nine offices around the state. As I mentioned, we're a statewide organization. This year, we're in about 250 schools or Head Start sites, mostly Title I. We engage 5,000 volunteers and 4,000 donors, and together we hold up about 25, 21,000 students we were able to serve last year, and they took home, we didn't quite make our goal of 215, about 200,000 books. So it's a community of about 30,000 Oregonians that are working in a volunteer and slightly-paid capacity to make this effort work. Our budget's about $4 million a year. So does the reading program work? We hear that it does work, and this is from, from parents and teachers, and sometimes the kids themselves. So 87% of the students improved in reading confidence, we have improvement in reading comprehension, and in their enjoyment of reading. Again, we don't teach reading, we model a love of reading, we make it fun, and if it's fun and the kids enjoy it, then they'll want to do more of it. So that's what we do. We wanted to talk to you about what's going on at Tuolton Elementary this year, and I have a quote here from this really lovely lady named Becky Bard. When I asked her to come and share a little bit today about the program, I said, what's going on there? And she's, she immediately said, "The teachers and the office staff, the principal are extremely warm and welcoming, and we get the sense that Smart is an important and valued part of the week. Our volunteers mention how lovely the school is and how much they like to read at Tuolton," which is really a nice reflection on the city. Becky's going to share a few things.
Yeah, and these photos, you'll see, they were actually taken in the kindergarten classrooms at Tuolton. We are in three kindergarten classrooms, we serve about 62, 63 kids. Each one of those children takes home one or two books every month for their own personal library. We have two, two to three readers in every classroom every week, and they present their stories on a big screen so all the children can see the books. And the children get very excited, it's really wonderful, and they get to know their readers, and they welcome them by name, and they ask where they are if they're not there. And it's, it's such a lovely situation that we have there. It looks like we've taken home 232 new books, so that's very exciting. The thrill of it is that as much as the children enjoy it, the volunteers, and many of them who live in the area, tell me that they get as much, if not more, out of it than the children do. I'm not sure who gets more, but it's a lovely situation, it's the best half hour of the day for, for a lot of these people. I can't say enough about how wonderful Tuolton is as a school to work with, how welcoming they are, and that the teachers are, they, they want us to show up, and they make time in their schedule because they do value it. And, you know, I get to stand around and watch, and it's, it's a thrill for me. So thank you, City of Tuolton, for helping us make this possible for your kids.
There's no standing around with you, Becky. I've watched. Our volunteer, our lead coordinator's put in probably a minimum of three hours a week, and some put in as many as 10 volunteer hours a week. They are the boots on the ground, the ones that manage all the volunteers that are coming into the classroom, it's really important work, thank you for that. And a lot of them are former teachers, which includes Becky here, which is really great. So we predict that by June, each student at this school will have assembled a personal library of up to 14 books each, and that compares to last year, about 71 kids got 862 books. So it's really thrilling, and the teachers asked us to specifically reach every kindergartner at the school, and that was their choice, and so that's why we're doing the classroom reading and making sure that the kids pick out their own books. So this is what the joy looks like, this is what the faces of our kids look like. If you haven't seen a kid that gets to pick out their own book, not a book that's been assigned to them, this is what it looks like, which is pretty great. Joy is also one of our, one of our values that we have at Smart, too. I wanted to mention quickly our inclusive collection, and I brought a few sample books today so that you can see some of the work that we're doing along the lines of inclusivity. We want to make sure that every child can see themselves in a book. And I don't know how it was when you were growing up, but when I was growing up, I always saw somebody who looked like me in a book. But now we're finding that the demographics of Oregon have changed, and when I talk to people my age who look different from me, they often say, "I never saw myself in a book, growing up." So we want to make sure that every kid, no matter what their background or what their family structure is, can see themselves in a book. So we've made a concerted effort to bring in lots of different books for the kids to choose from. We also know now that, that, how do I explain this, positive childhood experiences. There's been a lot of research on adverse childhood experiences. You've probably heard of the ACE program, and we know that a lot of people experience trauma, including some of the kids that we serve. So those would be things like abuse, exclusion, or loss, for example. There has not been a lot of research on positive childhood experiences, but the new reach, the new research is showing that all of these different things, laughing, smiling, affirmation, conversation, engagement, opportunity, relationship, all the things that happen during a Smart Reading session are considered positive childhood experiences, and the research is showing that they can help buffer, not prevent, but buffer some of the negative experiences. So when people say, "Hey, isn't it just about books and reading?", we say, "Yes, and it can be so much more." So I wanted to mention that as well. So our reason for being here tonight is to say thank you, but also a request that you spread the word about Smart Reading. We also have a book bank where we accept used children's books, we refurbish them, clean them up, bundle them, and send them back out into the community. So if that's something that's of interest to you, we can get you more information about that. We always encourage everyone to consider volunteering or making donations, and you've done that, the council has done that. Thank you very much for the donation. We also have done quite a bit of work around trauma-informed care, science-based reading, and representation in books, and if that's something that you are interested in, or people that you know are interested in, we actually provide trainings on those topics. For more information, you can contact me. So any questions from the council for us?
Questions?
Oh, I just want to say, I think it's wonderful how you are doing the positive spin in helping kids have that base to go forward in life, in top of the, providing them books, which are, you know, of those of us that read books know, it's a way for you to have your own new world to explore. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's right.
Thank you very much for the presentation. In your experience, what, when do you see, maybe this is for the volunteer, where kids start getting disinterested of read, in reading? It seems like you're at Head Starts, but, Head Start programs, but when you start seeing the lack of, or like they're starting to kind of have other interest in reading, what age, what grade do you see that?
You know, it's an interesting question. So we, at Tuolton, we, we only serve the kindergarten students, and we try to catch them before that happens. That's kind of the goal of trying to, to get into the classrooms early so that they develop this love of reading, and everything that goes... develop this love of reading, and everything that goes around, including building the relationships and having the positive experiences. At another school where I'm also a site coordinator, in the past, we, we did kindergarten through third grade, and working with second and third graders was different. It, it, it was, at that point, some of those kids had, had already experienced some tough times in school, where they're already falling behind and they know that they're behind. And at, at that other school, being able to have them sit down with an adult, one-on-one for half an hour, who's not teaching them to read, but who's enjoying a book with them, really made a difference for them. And I would say that, 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 I would see that more with the second and third graders. But again, at, at Tuolton, we get the, the kindergarteners, and they're, they, they enjoy hearing the stories, and then when it comes time to pick their book, and they can pick any book they want, that, they, they light up, and they, they get excited about their books, and they're showing their books to their friends, and to me, and to everyone that can see their books. So in kindergarten, they're, if, if we can get to them in kindergarten, they're very, very excited about it.
That's awesome. Just the other question about your services, is there any interest of joining at a, like a library, or kind of, do you have any connections with libraries as well, or just schools?
Right now, our primary connection is in the public schools and in Head Start sites. We do some work with girls and boys clubs and some other after-school programs as well. We are in communication with the library, I can tell you that Multnomah County Library also has a program from, for newborns, and through our book bank, we have some program where we get books out to newborns as well. So we're not in the libraries, but we have done partnerships with them.
And one more question. I know it's "Make a Reader" today, but what does the S-STAR stand for?
Start, start, start making a reader today, and a little bit of folklore. That acronym was made up by Michael Powell of Powell's Books. And that was part of SMART's folklore, and I got a chance to ask him point-blank if that was really what happened. And he explained that he had went to a meeting back in 1991, when, before we got started, and was pretty excited about it, but thought it needed something catchy. So he went somewhere, and on a cocktail napkin, was making up acronyms, and he came up with "Start Making a Reader Today". So that's kind of fun. We, we continue to have a good relationship with Powell's.
Nice, thank you.
Council Hillier.
Thank you. I'd just like to say an extra thank you for sharing more about your program, and for making sure there's upstream protective factors in our community. It really matters for every community and every child, and thank you for your work. It's really, obviously impressive.
Thank you.
All right. I just, I'm not a SMART reader, but I've read, I've read in schools here in Tuolton for the last few years, and it's true. I've gone kindergarten to third grade, when you get down on the floor with them, I lay out three books, they pick the book they want me to read to them, they just light up. And it is probably, they're super jazz, but I'm also pretty stoked, because the best part of this job is reading to kids at the schools, and enjoy it tremendously. And it is, because the interaction, once I'm done reading the book, you know, we talk about the more, you know, what the story, you know, what you were supposed to learn about the book, but also is the interaction, because then I start getting peppered, you know, with questions, about being mayor and stuff like that. So it's a lot of fun. So folks who are kind of interested in doing that, I encourage them to volunteer, because you, you just walk out there with a big smile every time you do this, so.
It's the best day of the week, that's for sure.
It is, it absolutely is. In fact, you mentioned snow on Thursday, and I'm a little concerned about that, because that's one of our swan days.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it, appreciate what you're doing. Let us know how things are going, you know, you know, throughout the year, you don't have to just check in once a year, because this, again, this is one of the fun things, to see kids learn, get interested in reading, you get them going, then our library hopefully keeps them going. And again, thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome. And if you ever want to come to Tuolton to see the program in action, just either contact Sharon, and she'll get in touch with me, or you can even call the school, and they'll, they'll let you know. We're, we're at Tuolton's on Tuesdays from 1:35 to 2:05. Don't be late.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to our second special report, the Washington County Sheriff's Department Annual Report. Sheriff Massey, welcome.
Hi there. Thank you for having us. And my partner, Sheriff John Cook. And we do sincerely appreciate your taking the time to sort of let us share with you all of the countywide services that the Washington County Sheriff's Office provides. And so what you see here is just an illustration that wherever you live, we serve you, and that obviously includes Tuolton. We provide our countywide services to over 600,000 community members, and we are the primary first responders to our rural, urban, unincorporated areas and our municipal contract cities. And those are Cornelius, North Plains, Banks, and Gaston. And before I get too far into it, one thing I do want to lead with is that the partnership and collaboration and teamwork that we have with Chief Pickering and the Tuolton City Police Department is a significant reason why we maintain that we are the safest urban county in Oregon. And so I just want to make sure that all of you know how valuable and how much I sincerely, we sincerely appreciate that partnership. You have an exceptional chief, which I know you know. The sheriff is the chief executive law enforcement officer and conservator of the peace, and our core values are do your best, do the right thing, and treat others the way you want to be treated. Those are core values that every single person that works in the sheriff's office knows by heart, but also embodies. And I will tell you that it is also the last thing I say to my daughters when they are at the bus stop in the morning and getting off on their way to school, because in every poor decision either they or I have made, I could point to one or all of those core values where we might have missed. So I want to talk a little bit about what the sheriff is required to do statutorily. So the top two things are what all police agencies are required to do, arrest individuals who commit crime, and defend the county against those who riot or endanger the public peace or safety. We are required to do those, having a police agency, and everything in bold and blue underneath are additional missions that we are required to facilitate. Providing court security in our courtrooms, search and rescue operations, we operate the only county jail in Washington County. We execute civil process and court orders, so think of things like restraining orders, eviction orders, and any other civil process that comes from the courts. We execute all warrants, process, issue, deny, revoke concealed handgun licenses, and enforce laws on the waterways, so Tuolton River, Hag Lake, things like that, you'll see our boats out there occasionally. Each one of you should have a copy of our annual report. I want to lead by apologizing for the 2023 report getting to you so late. We will make sure that 2024 is to you mid-year toward, just after the summer, hopefully. If you don't, or anyone anywhere would like to review the report, you can also find it at WCSOannualreport.com or scan the QR code. We do this every year, just to highlight the extraordinary work and countywide services that we provide. So the Washington County Jail, it is something else. I've been here before, talking to you about the jail and services we have not been able to provide at the rate that we would like to. We are making progress, but there's much to be said about our current jail. So at 572 beds, we are the second smallest jail per capita in the state. Due to what was short staffing and COVID, really, but then short staffing after that, we went down to 388 available beds and had three housing units closed. We are making some significant headway in our recruitment, hiring, and retention efforts. And so while our staffing is looking up, we will not be able to open up those additional housing units, because we are now engaging in some critical infrastructure facility repairs. So the jail 1998 was our last, I don't know if we have all that, nope. So, so the 1998, why is it going the other way? Oh, sorry, there we go. 1998 was when the jail was opened, and now we are in dire need of a new roof, HVAC system, and hot, cold water piping throughout the entire facility. And so the Board of County Commissioners allocated funds to begin those projects, and they have started. So we are underway. Additionally, those, in order to get them finished, we have to empty two housing units, and then when the infrastructure for those two housing units is complete, we will move adults in custody, fill those, and empty two more, and get it done all the way down the line of the building. Those are scheduled to be completed right around summer of 2026. So for the duration of that, that construction, we'll have those two housing units closed. During that time, we are not going to take our foot off the gas for hiring, retention, recruitment, and getting more folks that really are passionate about serving and serving our community, both in the jail and out on the road.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's John Cook, I'm the undersheriff here in Washington County. I'm going to talk about some of our countywide interagency teams. Policing over the years has become increasingly difficult and complex and expensive. It requires a lot of training and equipment to, to keep the professionalism that we see and love across Washington County. None of our agencies are large enough to do some of these complex tasks by ourselves. So by pooling our resources in many of these eight interagency teams I'm going to talk about, we'll talk about how we're able to all come together and provide professional service across all of Washington County, no matter where you live. We see this great, you know, partnerships with all of county government and this, and our municipal partners, we also see this in policing, with the sheriff's office and Tuolton Place and our other city partners. We're able to train all of our staff and train some of our special teams to very high levels and equip them well by pooling our resources, and then resolve a lot of these problems that we'll talk about. The first team we're going to talk about is the mental health response team. I'm sure you've all heard of this team. We started this around 2011 as a pilot project with the sheriff's office, Washington County Behavioral Health, and LifeWorks Northwest. This was putting a licensed clinician in a car with a deputy at the time. It was very successful. We grew this team over the years, we now have South County teams down here, providing service with Tuolton, Tigard, and Sherwood, as well as teams with Hillsborough and Beaverton and the sheriff's office. We provide seven-day-a-week coverage, multiple teams during our peak hours. Really, it's kind of from about 8:00 in the morning till about 11:00 at night, when we really see a lot of those calls for, for service. One of the unique things about this, this model is we're responding to people that are in crisis. And so we're able to get mental health clinicians out there in the field and address some of these issues and de-escalate them and divert people from the criminal justice system. These teams respond to over 3,000 calls for service a year to folks that are in crisis. When we look at their use of force and their de-escalation capabilities, and how many people they divert from the criminal justice system, it's, it shows how successful this program has been. LifeWorks Northwest are the clinicians that Washington County Behavioral Health contract with. When we don't have mental health response team, teams on, in those kind of wee mornings of the hour, or wee, the hours of the morning, when there's not a lot of calls for service, those clinicians can still respond, the crisis team has folks that can come out. It just takes them a little bit longer to get there, and then our patrol deputies or patrol officers in the different cities will be there to assist them. Same, same clinicians, same training, just a little bit different model after hours. The next team we're going to talk about is the Westside Interagency Narcotics Team. This team has been around for decades. It's a task force partnership with the sheriff's office, currently Beaverton, Hillsborough, FBI, DEA, and the National Guard. 12th and a half have been members of this team off and on over the years. Staffing is always an issue we all, all face. One of the large issues that this team has been focusing on in recent years is obviously the opioid issues. You can see here a case where they seize 1.4 metric tons of liquid heroin coming into Washington County. It has become such a commonplace for this team to seize hundreds of pounds of methamphetamine, hundreds of thousands of pills of fentanyl, and, and heroin coming in, into our neighborhoods. When we know one pill can kill, if this team is seizing hundreds of thousands of pills, we just don't know how many lives they're saving. In addition to that, they also track Narcan deployments. Our police officers and deputies across the county carry Narcan, and they're often first responders to folks that are overdosing. They often beat paramedics and fire there because they're out patrolling the neighborhoods and they're able to deploy Narcan, and we do track those deployments. What we've seen in recent years is those deployments are actually going down. That doesn't mean that the problem is going away, it means that more community members are obtaining Narcan, and a lot of users are getting Narcan and carrying that with them as well. So that public education has really helped alleviate a lot of those overdoses. But we are still seeing a lot of overdoses here in Washington County. And with all of those drugs, obviously, there's a, there's a risk of exposure to our police officers and deputies, our property evidence folks that process those, those drugs as well. Move on to the next ones. So this next group of teams we're going to talk about is kind of a clump. This is our tactical negotiations team, which is a traditional SWAT team, our crisis negotiations unit, which is a hostage negotiation team, our remotely operated vehicle team, which operates drones and ground robots, and then our incident management team, which is a team that comes out and helps manage these situations. These teams usually deploy as a group. Often, there's 40 to 50, upwards of 100 deputies and officers that are responding to some of these large, complex scenes. The tactical team responds to over 100 calls for service a year here in Washington County. You don't see that very often on the news, and that's a good thing. We really consider these teams an escalation of safety. The tools, tactics, and training that they bring to these complex and very dangerous situations, people often armed with weapons, they're able to slow down the situation, bring calm to the chaos, and de-escalate it to, to a safe resolution. And again, when we look at the use of force numbers that these teams are utilizing, it is well below the national average. And again, it's just by all of us pooling our resources, providing that complex training and, and equipment to these teams, and really having a professional service across all of Washington County. Back to you, Sheriff.
Oh, lucky. So, looking forward, one of the things we are working on, in fact, we just had a follow-up meeting today, is we have contracted with a vendor called Matrix Consulting to do a jail capacity study. And what they are doing is they are looking at our historical data for our, and for our population and projections, to give us a sense of what we might need for our Washington County jail through the year 2055. We have to think strategically about what needs our community might need in a jail situation far into the future. And as we look at that, and we should have some of that information back within about a month, that's when we start to plan for how we get there, and what we might need for funding, and what we might need for services within a new jail. Because the adult in custody that we are dealing with today is drastically different than the person 20 years ago, with significant, it's a more fragile adult in custody with behavioral health, actual medical and addiction and substance use disorders. It's, it's much more complex, and the services that we provide need to be provided in a much more holistic way. It is not housing humans, it is helping people to get from where they are when they come into our custody, and able to transition into our community in a way that helps ensure our community's safety on the other end, and their overall chances of success. It's our responsibility to make sure that we provide an environment that allows for them to be physically, mentally, emotionally well, and better when they get out of custody. So that's something that we're currently engaged in. I did reference the facility updates. In addition to the infrastructure that's happening just to make it a livable building, we are also building an additional courtroom in our law enforcement center, which is the same building our jail is in. And so our jail administration folks, the commander, the administrative staff, lieutenants, they had to... they had to relocate out of the spaces they've been in since 1998 so that we could put a courtroom there. And now we are putting people in closets until we can find ways to expand for those spaces. And so we have quite a few facility updates in the works, and that's going to be going on for a couple of years. And then in November of this year, we will have our local option, Public Safety Lobby, Lobby, coming up. And so that is something that we are working with the county commissioners and the CAO's office, DA's office, Juvenile, Community Corrections, to review what our cost of services are and what programs our community really wants to see us provide so that we can assess for what that looks like and how we communicate with that getting onto the ballot. So those are the top priorities really for us as we're looking forward into this next year. With that, what questions can we answer from you?
Questions for Sheriff and UnderSheriff. How's the Hillier?
Sorry, getting in at 12:30 apparently. I just drank way too much coffee today.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm just curious, you, I'll start backwards. So why, I'm curious why the courthouse is going to be moved internally. And I wonder if, I appreciate your concern about the positive and productive rehabilitation of the adults there, but I'm kind of worried about your officers and the people that are serving who might have their offices in closets. So I'm curious about why there's a courthouse going there and putting people in closets.
That's a great question. So Facilities is working hard to make those closets livable and build out some spaces for us so that we can consolidate our patrol command staff with our jail command staff. The reason another courtroom is going in where jail admin was is because when the building was designed, that was really the strategic, long-term goal for that, knowing that we would be given another judge, which we were by the state. They no longer had space for that judge. And so we do, we've always had one courtroom in the law enforcement center for arraignments and things like that. So they're now finally realizing that plan to build out basically a mirror image of the first courtroom there where jail admin was. And then we will be able to, while it is a benefit having another judge and being able to get people through the adjudication process, it really does also ultimately help us because cases are not coming through the adjudication process as quickly as they used to. So we are finding that pre-COVID, for instance, it used to be around 50/50 for people in custody who were pre-trial and people in custody who were sentenced. We are now at about 80/20. Because of COVID and the way, you know, you couldn't be in person for so long, and court cases weren't being adjudicated in the same way because they were having to figure out how to do that, we have a huge backlog. And so as a result of, what, a year and a half, almost two, people not getting through the court process as efficiently as they were, and having to be creative about distancing and how quickly people are, you know, like one person going through at a time, we have this huge backlog. Now we are trying to get people through the process, so they give us another judge, but there's no space for that. So now we have to build some space, which means that we have to be creative in how we find space for the work to get done. And so in an abundance of collaboration and flexibility, we are working to find ways to make it happen while we continue to identify what the future looks like, like with that jail expansion. And okay, that will have to include office space. And, you know, where might patrol be situated strategically that might allow for the law enforcement center to expand for jail folks? So it's, it's more like an "and."
Sheriff, if I could add to-
Yes, please.
The other benefit to adding the second courthouse to our law enforcement center is when we have adults in custody that need to go to court, we don't need to put them in vans and transport them over to the courthouse.
That's also-
And so there are some efficiencies by having them co-located with the courts. We can just bring them through a hallway, through a secured area, and get them in front of a judge.
Safer for our staff as well.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So I always like to hear the one pill can kill because I did just see your former DEA Director receive an award this last week. And what a, I don't know anything about the new director, but I know that the new, that the previous one is one in a million. But it brings me to, I saw an article recently that said the DEA in Oregon for Drug Takeback Days, I'm going to the narcotics topic, has gotten rid of the incinerator, and I know they were charging our local police way more. And so in the spirit of collaboration, I would love to be able to initiate some conversation with you about how we can figure out how to get, it's so awesome that these drugs are getting taken off the street, but I really am interested in how we're going to operate Drug Takeback Days. And, and I know there are agencies and different groups around that are very interested around the county, Washington County, and I'm sure the metro area. And if I understood it correctly, that was the only incineration place in the state. I could be wrong about that, but I'd really welcome conversation and collaboration around that topic.
Absolutely.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember. So we do, we do take drugs back. We don't do the formal Drug Takeback Days anymore. It's been a while since we've done those. We, when we do receive drugs from community members that want to turn in prescription pills and things of that nature, we can take them down and get them incinerated. One of the reasons we've decreased some of those services is the cost. A lot of the pharmacies nowadays have locations where community members can take their prescription pills in there and turn those in. And so that really kind of decreased the need before, before those were available to the community. That's why we're doing a lot more of those. But we would be open to exploring those options again in the future.
Other questions, comments? Councilsacko?
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the work that you do. I have two questions. The first question, I mean, one can use their imagination, but what are the, what are the issues that are caused with the, the shortage of beds? And how does that impact our community for those who are listening?
That's great. Well, some of the issues, the biggest issues for us actually are that we are encountering people out on the street. So there are certain charges that people are going to come to jail for no matter what, right? Domestic violence, things like that. And then there are some things, though, that they might have come to jail for previously when we were fully open and fully staffed, that they wouldn't come to jail for now. Think about some of those lower-level theft charges and things like that, that really do impact the livability of Washington County. However, what we're seeing is when they get that citation and they're released, instead of going into custody, oftentimes, they are failing to appear. And so then they get a warrant for failure to appear, and if they're arrested on that, they'll come into custody. They might not stay in custody because of the bed issues where the people that are in custody really need to be in custody and aren't options to have them released. And then the more you get those failed to appears, again, those are those cases that don't get adjudicated and that never come to a resolution so that the entire justice ecosystem can continue to serve the way it's supposed to. Now, one thing I didn't mention that's really a looking forward aspect is that we are building a more robust pre-trial release program. We received a significant grant to fund a pre-trial release program that allows us to purchase our own electronic monitoring equipment. And so currently, people who go out on electronic home detention or electronic monitoring go through a vendor that only monitors during the week and not overnight. And so the sort of risk to victims if people violate that in the middle of the night or on the weekend is more pronounced. We are bringing that in-house, and we are going to provide the equipment, and then the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week monitoring by deputies who are already working in the jail and on duty to facilitate that pre-trial program. And so that has come as a result of the collaboration between the judges, the presiding judge, the district attorney's office, us, Community Corrections, and the county. And so that is something that's coming to hopefully mitigate the risk to the community on having fewer jail beds.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
My second question, as you talked about the Mental Health Response Team and all the good work that they're doing, would having additional folks on that team reduce having folks in jails and offending and reduce those risk factors and get those folks more help? And if that is the case, you know, what would be the steps to have to expand that team?
Yes, I'll answer that one. The answer is yes. More Mental Health Response Team members would allow us to provide greater coverage. In a perfect world, we would like to be 24 hours a day. The reality is those wee morning hours, like 3:00 in the morning, there's not always the calls for service that really warrant having two, I'll just say, highly-paid resource when you're talking about a police officer and a mental health clinician sitting around just waiting for that next call to come in. So we're really trying to use our resources to, you know, very efficiently. If we had more teams, we could have more service during those peak hours. We are able to, even if we can't get a team out there, they're, they can also provide consultation. So if we have a police officer somewhere in the county, and let's say we have a team tied up here in Twelton, and there's a call in Aloha that they need assistance, they can a lot of times get on the phone and provide some direction and advice to them. So we're still able to divert people from the criminal justice system, but it just gets them a higher level of service out in the community immediately as opposed to waiting for some type of follow-up. The other issue is when we have more teams, they're able to do some follow-up. So if they have folks that are chronically experiencing these issues, they're able to check in on them periodically and make sure that they're following through with some of their safety plans and not getting into crisis again. But a lot of those hurdles come to funding and then staffing. Not only are we facing staffing shortages in public safety, but the mental health fields are as well. So getting clinicians hired and staffed is, is another challenge.
Other questions? Congresswoman Pratt?
Well, it sounds like you need a lot of skills and a lot more money to help the situation. But you really piqued my interest when you were talking about that jail's not just a place to house people.
Yes.
So I'd just like to know, like, briefly, what you're doing to help make sure there's less recidivism and these people are back in the community in a productive way.
Awesome. Well, I will share that we have a really robust set of programming for our adults in custody. Everything from GED, we have adults in custody who get their GEDs while they're in custody, parenting classes, addiction, substance use disorder-type coursework, anger management-type of classes. We also have courses that might not lead you to think, oh, this will really help them when they get out. But they really do provide a sense of well-being and giving people something to follow in their passion. If you were to walk into our law enforcement center today, you would see where our old jail admin is, and they have knocked down those walls, but they've put up barriers around it. And on those big white barriers are artwork that was done by our adults in custody who participate in art classes and things like that. And so what we decided as part of that was to sort of give a project and say, hey, who wants to contribute to the beauty of the law enforcement center lobby for this next year and a half? And so we had staff come in and allow people to kind of, they got their artwork done. It's been put up in place. Some of those folks helped get it there. It's really quite nice, and it gives them a sense of self-confidence and self-esteem and satisfaction. And those traits really do help people as they transition out. Other things that we have are transition programs that teach resume writing, help people get social security numbers and ID cards and housing placement and things like that as they're getting ready to transition into the community. So they're not just released from our door with nowhere to go, but a set of resources and peer mentors and things like that as they're getting out. What am I missing?
I think you covered it all.
Gosh. I'm like, what did I miss?
That's great. And then, other than Chief Pickering and the Twelton Police, what do you think has made and kept Washington County as the safest urban county in Oregon?
I think that those who choose to serve are really aligned and are serving in a way that reflects humility and really a sort of commitment to put others first. And by those who serve, I mean all of us. All of us who decide, like, my husband is a teacher. He is serving. I just see a significant commitment from the people who are choosing to serve here to be aligned, find ways to stay connected, and to provide a, not just public safety service, but all of those infrastructure services that provide holistic services for the people in our community who need it. It's far beyond just public safety because you have folks in Health and Human Services who are providing services to people who are in need in our community that help mitigate them from having to resort to crime. And so I really do think it's the overwhelming collaboration that occurs here that is unique and it's different because I came from somewhere else, and it didn't exist there the way it does here. What do you have?
Yeah, I would add in there, Sheriff, just kind of along those same lines, professionalism and collaboration are important. Making sure that we're hiring good people, providing them good training and equipment and allowing them to do their jobs. But then the collaboration that we see, you know, Washington County is so intertwined with our cities and our county government and a lot of the different little pockets all over the, where there's intersections between all the different cities. And by having that communication and collaboration, we're able to share information is, because a lot of the, the folks that we're dealing with don't know where the city of Twelton stops and sure it begins and unincorporated Washington County is.
Right.
And so for us to be able to work together as a team, I think that really helps us be successful in keeping us a safe, livable community.
Any other questions? I've got three. Let's start with the big one first.
All right.
So in that facility study that's going to be done, will that also incorporate the idea of expanding the jail and/or a brand-new jail? The possibilities and funding mechanisms, all the good stuff?
All of that. That's the why.
Yeah, because that's one of the things-
Yes, sir.
You're band-aiding an old building, and is it wise to dump money into it versus expanding it or finding a new spot, a bigger facility? Okay?
If I can add to that, Mayor. So a couple of things. When we built that facility, it's built with pods, as the mayors and a lot of others, you know, folks have been able to tour the jail. And so there was, there's always been a plan to add additional pods. By keeping it co-located with our existing jail, some of the economies of scale for housing, for food, for laundry, for medical, that keeps it all on one footprint. And so it is still a very sound jail. There's a lot of infrastructure we need to update after 20-some years. But by adding on to that same facility, we'll see it be very efficient.
I understand you still have, you have acreage that you can still use.
We do, yes.
Okay.
And we can go up.
Well, you just mentioned, UnderSheriff, I was going to give a suggestion. There's a lot of new mayors, so you might want to do another tour for the Washington County mayors, except don't put us in that freaking elevator.
I was going to say.
I'm taking the stairs.
I took the stairs last time.
Me too.
But you've got a lot of new mayors who probably-
Yes.
Would help you with your messaging if they saw it themselves.
Yep.
And then finally, on the Mental Health Response Teams, is any of that federally funded, and is that funding in risk?
I do not. I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if the behavioral health side receives any federal funding to provide some of that. I know for the police side, it's usually coming from our local funding. I know you all have provided some funding for your staff down here, as we have as well. Some of it does come from our Public Safety Local Option Lobby, which is a countywide public safety service that we provide across Washington County. So I do not believe that any of that, those dollars are-
Especially on the LifeWorks Northwest, if they have grant money, they're using to offset that payroll costs. I'm kind of concerned if they're going to lose it or it's frozen.
Yes. I will double-check on that to see where they get their funding.
Because I hate that all of a sudden, you know, the people disappear here in six, seven months because funding's been frozen.
Yes.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for taking time out and visiting us.
Thanks, y'all.
I look forward to the, the tour. Again, I'm taking, well, put the new mayors in the elevator because they don't know.
Oh.
It's a hazing thing.
Sometimes you don't have to say it if you just let people experience it for themselves.
This is what, our mechanics are so good in here. Our barriers get stuck.
Well, please know that if you think of questions later that we don't have time for here or you didn't think of here, don't hesitate to reach out. There's no time limit on that. We're here for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to, I think, general business.
It's Don time.
Oh, it's Don time? Here we go. So that brings us to general business. I have number one, consideration of Resolution Number 5865-25, adopting the grant application, acceptance, and management policy. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here with the city. And I'm here with Matt Warner, our Assistant Finance Director. Back in November, we were in front of you in a work session talking about the needs for a grant policy. The direction from the council that night was to go forth, do good, and come back with that policy. So we're here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Matt. He'll talk about the policy itself and the benefits to the organization of having a policy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Matt Warner. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. Before you tonight is Resolution 5865-25, the Grant Application Acceptance and Management Policy. Upon adoption, the policy will be incorporated into the city's financial policies, which are vital to the city's long-term approach to strategic financial management. So there are many benefits to the city for having a grant management policy like the one before you tonight. The city operates under a decentralized grant management process, meaning it's the responsibility of the individual departments to seek out funding, apply for the grant, and if awarded, manage the grant upon award. This policy does not change any of that process. However, it does become an important resource for employees throughout the city that are responsible for managing a wide variety of grants from a range of granting agencies. It does this by establishing a consistent framework that can be relied upon. It provides guidance and assistance to the organization from pre-application through grant closeout, and it streamlines the grant application and acceptance process. Beyond that, it is an industry best practice to have a strong grant management policy in place, and it is looked favorably upon by granting agencies and auditors alike. So the purpose of the policy is to establish uniform guidelines and procedures for city staff in the development, submission, and management of grants and receipt of restricted donated funds. So the main takeaway here is that the goal of the policy is to be a resource for the departments that manage grants, especially those that might not manage grants on a regular and consistent basis, and to help guide them through the grant process. So what does the policy do? By having the policy and guidelines in place, it helps ensure that only grant programs that align with the city's missions and priorities are pursued and ultimately carried out. It helps ensure that each grant opportunity has been evaluated for the fiscal and legal implications. For example, can the grant be carried out with existing resources? Are there any unusual terms within the grant process that might conflict with existing city regulations? And lastly, the policy helps manage compliance with grant terms and requirements to maintain eligibility for future funding. So the policy is broken down into four main sections. The first is the general section. This is the piece of the policy that lays out the minimum requirements for applying for and managing a grant. For example, it lays out that grant funding is not to be used to fund ongoing operational activities, and each grant must be managed in accordance with the city's policy and grant terms to ensure good standing with the granters. The next section of the policy is the definitions. This speaks for itself. It outlines what are the key, or defines what the key terms are that are used throughout the policy. The third section of the policy is where, really where the meat of the policy is. It lays out the responsibility for four functional areas. It's the city council, the city manager, finance department, and the departments requesting the grants. We've pulled out the key responsibilities for each of these sections from the policy. First is for the city council. The city council is responsible for approving any grant agreements when the grantor requires approval by the governing body prior to applying for a grant. The city manager is responsible for signing grant applications and accepting grant awards on behalf of the city as delegated by the city council. The finance department is responsible for being a resource for the department that's requesting the grant and managing the grant from the beginning of the grant through reporting and closing out of the grant. And the last is the department. They're responsible for all of the granting activities from application all the way through the end of the program and carrying out the program's objectives. The fourth section of the grant policy is the general, or is the grant procedures and general guidelines. So this section provides departments with things to consider when pursuing grants. These include undertaking an analysis to determine any matching requirements, determining out-year fiscal impacts and workload impacts, and estimating the administrative burden on city staff in implementing the grant. The results of these analyses will be used to determine the merits of proceeding with submitting a grant application. The last item that we have for you tonight is a flow chart for the grant acceptance, application and acceptance piece of the policy. So whenever a funding opportunity is identified, one of the first things that's needed to be done is determining if there is a council, a requirement by the granting agency for council to approve the application or the ability to submit an application. If there is, the first thing that will happen is it's put on the next council meeting agenda for approval to seek your approval to apply for the grant. After this approval, the department will begin the pre-application review. If the review determines they can meet the requirements of the grant and manage it with current resources, an application will be submitted. If the application is awarded, then, or I guess if the application isn't awarded, that pretty much ends the process right there. We don't move any further than that. But if it is awarded, the department will put together a grant award form and submit that to finance, legal, and city manager. If we can comply through that review, if we determine that we can comply with the requirements of the grant, the grant will be accepted and we'll move on to the performance of the With that, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions?
Questions for Matt or Don? Council President Pratt.
Hi. Well, I'm just going to say generally, I think this is great, and it's going to save us from an error, you know, by having that procedure set up. I'm a little, I'm just a little confused, just like if someone in a department says, oh, this grant would be great, and maybe they talk with their department head, then who determines, like, if it aligns with the city's mission and who's determining, if it's not a grant that has to go through city council, who determines if this grant can move, application can move forward internally?
So that's all done internally with the department. They're evaluating the requirements of the grant and determining if that does align with...
So they're doing it at each department level?
Yeah.
And then you're just involved with your checklist and helping them make sure all the...
Yeah, we're looking at kind of...
Ties are dotted.
Later on in the process, if there are any, like, red flags as far as, like, matching requirements or, you know, obligations after the completion of the award that might have fiscal impacts into the future.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Other questions? Council Rayas.
Are we talking about any size of grant, or is there a specific grant that you say, okay, a $500 grant is not the same as a $5, $10,000 grant? So is there, like, the process is for every amount, any amount?
Well, we'll be very similar because the acceptance of the grant still would be whether the size would still either have to come to the council, that delegation would have to happen. If it's got a grant agreement, again, regardless of the size, there's requirements that have to go along with it. So while this policy will cover any size grant, of course, there will be, some will be a lot easier and not as burdensome to go through that process than some others. But yes, anything would fall under this because of the different requirements.
Other questions?
I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 5865-25.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 5865-25. Any discussion on the motions? It's a roll call vote. So Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. It's adopted.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, Don.
I'm just going to grab the envelope.
General Business, item number two, support for preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. This is Resolution 55866-25. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Don Hudson, your Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. In front of you is a resolution protecting the, or to support the preservation of the tax exemption on municipal bonds. So in January, you adopted your federal legislative agenda, which included the following, to protect local governments' ability to offer tax-exempt municipal bonds. This is important because about three-quarters of the public infrastructure in the United States is funded through municipal bonds. Locally, according to a report by the University of Chicago's Harris School of Public Policy, in the Oregon 6th Congressional District, there are 55 governments that have active bonds in the amount of about $4 billion. Since 2005, taxpayers in our district saved an estimated $84.4 million on local government projects financed with tax-exempt municipal bonds. Excuse me. Here in Towalton, we currently have two general obligation bonds, our 2023 Parks Bond and our 2018 Transportation Bond. Previously, bonds were sold for essential water infrastructure, for parks and trails, as well as the library and the police facility. Tax-exempt bonds carry a lower interest rate, currently about 2% less than a taxable bond issue, because investors are willing to accept a lower rate, an interest rate, because they're not paying taxes on that, on their interest. Those lower interest rates translate to lower costs to sell those bonds, as well as a lower tax levy, saving our taxpayers annually. I did a back-of-the-napkin estimation on our $15 million Parks Bond that we sold, and in our explanatory statement, we estimated the bonds would increase our tax rate by 29 cents per thousand. If that were a taxable issue, it would likely have been 34 cents per thousand. To maintain the rate that we advertised in our explanatory statement, we would have either had to, we would have issued less, which would have meant less money for projects. We would have had to reduce our project list. Now, Towalton is not the only entity that sells bonds on your tax bill. On your tax bill, you're also paying for bonds from Washington County, from Metro, from Portland Community College, Tiger Towalton School District, and Towalton Valley Fire and Rescue. For the average Towalton homeowner, for the 2024-25 tax year, it's estimated that a taxpayer would pay about $100 more annually on bonds if they were taxable. Apartment complexes pay a lot higher rate. So there, I was estimating, again, very back of the napkin, that apartment complexes would pay thousands of dollars more per year in taxes, which would then be passed on to the renters and would be an impact on the rent. So what you have in front of you is a resolution supporting the preservation of federal tax exemption as asked by the National League of Cities for us to put in front of you to, and after that, we would send it on to our Oregon congressional delegation. The resolution shows support for preserving our ability to issue tax-exempt bonds, which allows the city to borrow at a lower cost, which equates to completing more projects at a lower tax rate amounts for our taxpayers. If you adopt this resolution, we will draft a letter to Congresswoman Salinas's office to attach with the, do a letter to attach the resolution to. We will then forward that on to you for your review as well. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Don? Yep. Council President Pratt?
Okay, in the resolution, it says, it talks about the multiplier factor 2.11, meaning for every dollar borrowers achieve $2.11 in borrowing cost savings. Can you explain that a little more because it confuses me?
I will try.
Okay.
I'm looking at the language to make sure...
I get the 2% is more than 2%.
Yeah, so it's equated into that 2% difference, and that's the amount that the National League of Cities has calculated nationwide at about the $2.11 borrowing cost savings...
Okay.
By doing a non-taxable instead of a taxable.
Well, I knew you didn't write it because it'd be clear, but...
But it equates pretty much the same.
Other questions for Don? And just for the record, I already know Congresswoman Salinas is on board with this, but we're going through the motions. Our pretty much Senators Wyatt and Merkley and Congresswoman Salinas are all fine with keeping this tax-exempt status, but it doesn't hurt to send it out there and remind them that, you know, all the cities throughout the United States are looking for this.
And my hope too is even though our delegation is in support, as they're talking to other members of Congress, they can show how many others support this as well. And hopefully, if we can turn just a couple in the House, that will help save this as part of that tax plan. That's why this is being attacked again right now, is it's one of 50 options for paying a tax plan that's in front of Congress.
Just curious, what would, what is the opposition? Who would be someone that would oppose to something like this? And what are their comments? I'm just curious on that.
I got to hear this. How are you going to put this?
I'm just curious.
Yeah, there are people who feel that the, people who buy bonds should be paying tax on those, the interest on that. There's a long list, so it is being attacked by, there are members of Congress that have been attacking this for a while, and now that there is more of a majority in that avenue, there's getting more traction on it. But there are just, there are people that just believe that this should be taxed and don't see the impact on the infrastructure nationally. And I give you some of the facts of what it costs, what it costs us to have this taxable. So it's based upon, there's a number of factors there, but it's pretty much based upon that, it's just a philosophy that some people feel that they should be paying taxes on this money.
So the cities that are buying the bond paying, to pay taxes, or is it like, who, yeah, I mean, I'm just curious to, and would that be like, for instance, House Representative, federal House Representative, congressional leaders?
There are those that oppose this, who oppose tax exemption. It's the investors in our bonds that don't have to pay the tax on that, and so they're willing to take a lower interest rate in that so they, in order to buy those bonds. There's a number of investors, especially in the fixed income, the older population, that will buy these because they're more secure. So those are the people that are saving by buying our bonds, and it's a more stable investment as well.
Okay. Thank you for educating me.
Very well put. Any other questions for Don?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 5866-25.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 5866-25. Any discussions on those motions? I'll start 21 left. Council Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council Sacco?
Yeah.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Council Communications. Any communications from council? All right. Seeing none. Council Hillier, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Good night. Thank you for watching and attending tonight, if you were here in person. Have a good evening, and keep our eyes out for the weather at the end of the week.